This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order this the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. As we are back virtual and I do see a bunch of new names on the screen, I'm going to make an announcement about how the meeting's gonna run. Members of the public, please keep all of your microphones muted during the meeting unless you are the person asking a question. Also kindly keep your camera inactive unless you're speaking. The system does not deal well with multiple simultaneous speakers. The audio from only one person will come through at a time. Therefore, please only speak if you have been recognized. I don't have a traditional wooden gavel. I don't need one. This machine gives me a mute all button. If people aren't participating respectfully, I'll be forced to mute also. The person who has the floor can be heard. We'll proceed through the agenda now. If you wish to question or comment regarding a particular agenda item, please type into the chat bar that you do. If you look at one of the top corners of your screen, you'll see a little cartoon text bubble. When you click on that icon, you will see a strip appear on the side of your screen. Please type into that strip your request to speak. I will first look for questions from those who are using a computer to participate. Once I've been through those, or a computer, or a tablet, or a phone, smartphone. Once I've heard from all logged in digitally, I'll see comments from those who have telephoned in. If you intend to comment, you must introduce yourself by stating your name and address. We do have one executive session item tonight. And the way we'll handle that is I will bump off those people who are not to participate in the executive session. I will then lock the meeting for those who should be participating. While we're locked in executive session, you can log back into the meeting. You'll be in the waiting room and we'll unlock the meeting once the executive session is over. With that, please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishbein?
Here.
Lathan?
Here.
Marone?
Here.
Morganstein?
Here.
Chertelle?
Here.
Tada?
Here.
Testa? Zandry?
Here.
Chairman Savoni?
I'm here. Counselor Testa did advise me that he might be running a little behind this evening.
I'm just gonna continue for a minute with my usual. Mayor Dickinson?
Here.
Jimboz?
Present.
And Attorney Farrell?
Present.
Thank you very much. I'm all set.
Thank you. Moving along the agenda, can I have a motion on the items remaining on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept the consent agenda items A through F and H through J.
Second. That was me. Craig was behind. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye, aye.
I think we have all ayes and none opposed and no abstentions. Item removed from the consent agenda is item 3G. Can I have a motion on that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a transfer of funds, the amount of $60,000 from regular salaries and wages to overtime for the fire department.
Second. That's me again.
Moved. The second competition continues. Again. We have staff, or the department head from the fire department. I see Chief Head Guard logged in.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is for the EMT position. What happened was as we were creating the position of EMT, we designed their work schedule, as in their hours and their rotating schedule to match that of the firefighters. The firefighters work varying weeks in an eight-week rotation. They work two weeks at 34 hours, two weeks at 38 hours, and four weeks at 48 hours, which averages out the 42 hours. We subsequently learned that you cannot pay the EMTs in this fashion, as they are not carved out of the FLSA, the Federal, or the Fair Labor Standard Act, that they have to be compensated for overtime in the week or the pay period that they worked it. So what happened was the funding for these, this eight-hour block of time was in regular wages, as it is for the rest of the staff. But it's being paid for out of the overtime line in accordance with FLSA. So what this transfer is, is to move the money into the proper payroll category to pay that, their wages.
Thank you. Before I move on, Madam Clerk, I just note that Counselor Testa has arrived. Counselor Chertelle, this is your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Chief, thank you for that explanation. I'm, I have no opposition to this at all. I think I just wanted to just get a little, get that info, because I know this was a big deal when you guys, you know, you added, I think it was 16 or 15 EMT positions. I know you reduced, I think, six firefighter positions to help offset the cost, but I just wanted to understand that you're gonna be here tonight anyway, so I just figured it was a good thing to discuss publicly. But I'm satisfied with that explanation. I have no questions, and I appreciate the Chief's explanation. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Lathan?
Thank you. Good evening, Chief. So, miscalculation gets us to this point. Is this gonna come back again then, throughout the rest of the year, or a one-time fix, or is this gonna be a periodic thing? Like, what's the, what are the long-term consequences of the calculation error, the mistake?
Well, it's, the funding, there's actually is a lapse, or a lack of funding for the overtime, because that was not anticipated, obviously, because we didn't know we're obligated to pay that. So there is a shortfall there. This money, it should be enough to cover us till the end of the year. Obviously, there's a lot of other factors, because that same overtime account pays for all the normal overtime we've encountered prior to the EMT position. There's a lot of variables, and we move monies between replacement pay and overtime on a yearly basis. So I can't say this is the last transfer we'll have, but this is what the anticipated shortfall is, that was funded in regular wages.
So through the rest of the year, but you don't think then you'll be back after this? This will cover the fiscal year or the calendar year?
This will cover the fiscal year for this subject only. We have a lot of other impacts, and yes, we will be back. Our shortages due to workplace injuries, FLSA, I'm sorry, FMLA, and we have COVID impacts. So that, we will be coming back to you in the December meeting to discuss.
Okay, but this handles the EMT part?
Correct.
Okay, alright, and that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Morganstein.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Chief. So, I'm sure it wouldn't be easy, but is there any chance that you're looking into evening out their week so that they're not doing overtime?
Yeah, that's, it's a great question, in that, yes, we did look at that. But because they are assigned to a shift and they mirror, or they work the same schedule as the firefighters, that rotating schedule, they're assigned to a shift that was problematic when we did EMS Enterprise. I think two different work schedules meant they had alternating supervisors, they didn't have matched partners. It was extremely problematic from a service delivery standpoint. So this model, working with an assigned shift, with a consistent supervisory staff, is working very well, as we intended it to. The only downside was, in fact, the FLSA impact. So, I would say it's a very small impact compared to the quality of service delivery and quality of the workers' life.
And what is that annual cost come out to difference?
We're obligated to pay it regardless, because, again, it's, they would still work the average of 42 hours. The total impact for this year at the present salary rate is $26,624. That's what that eight hours per week for the 16 people, there's only eight people that would be paid overtime on a weekly basis. It rotates. For the eight employees, that is the total impact to the town for the year.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, it appears that that's all I have. In questions from the council, are there questions from any members of the public? If you could please type into the chat bar, I'll give it a minute. Mr. Garlic?
Yes, sir. So I just wanted to ask, have any other line items or budget items in the fire department operating budget suffered because of the shortfall in overtime money? And what I mean by that, has money had to be moved out of, say, training, or education, or maintenance, to adjust for the shortage in the overtime money for the EMTs?
As of right now, this is the first and only budget transfer that we've had.
Alright, so you don't anticipate any other programs suffering, or line item suffering, having to move money out of training, or anything like that, moving forward to cover a cost associated with overtime?
Sorry, specifically for the EMT, for the subject at hand? I do not anticipate that happening, no.
Okay, and in the, in the paperwork submitted with the, on the original consent agenda, I saw that there was reference to a transport division. Is the transport division funded in regular wage and overtime of the same line as the firefighter, or the fire suppression division?
Yes, that is correct. We have the Fire Marshal's Office, or Fire Marshal Division, fire suppression and transport are all in the same budget. There is no separate budget for any of the three.
Gotcha. So-
Mr. Garlic?
Yes, sir.
I just need you to give us your full name and your address, and you can continue. Thank you.
I apologize, sir. Edward Garlic, 8 Vombaco Drive.
Go ahead.
Alright, so in keeping with the, the topic at hand, with regular wage and overtime, do you project, do you see any projections for shortfalls in regular wage and overtime moving forward? That's good, that you think you would have to move money out of other budget line items, like training, or anything like that? And that'll be my last question.
Regular wages is actually a computation that's produced by the finance office, and that's based on positions and tenure in the department. So it's a, it's very much a calculation that is a solid one. However, as positions are open, like we have two openings right now, you actually gain, you spend less money out of general wages. That money, therefore, it's, your impact is in replacement pay. So what we often do when we carry open positions is, at the end of the fiscal year, we'll transfer that money to cover shortfalls in replacement. So that hasn't manifested itself yet, so I can't really speak to where we'll be at the end of the fiscal year.
That's, thank you, that's a good explanation. I understand that now. So you don't anticipate having to take away from any other line items at all throughout the fiscal year, like, like training, or anything like that?
Not for the EMT overtime, no.
Or overtime in general, since it's all the same line item, because fire suppression and the EMT, or the transport division, all are funded from the same line, overtime?
No, actually overtime and replacement pay are two different lines for two different purposes. So in the overtime line, no, correct, that's your statement. I don't anticipate needing to move more money into the overtime line.
Okay, and we're not talking about replacement pay now, so I won't ask that question. I think that's the, the proper, that's the etiquette, right?
I mean, you can bring it up, but it really doesn't have anything to do with the item on the agenda.
I understand. I won't bring it up. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I see no other interest on this matter. So, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein?
Yes.
Lathan?
Yes.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertelle?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Zandry?
Yes.
Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Yes, it does. That's all we have for items removed from the consent agenda. The next item is the public question and answer period. Mr. Martin, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'll just note that I am starting a three-minute timer, so that I can stay within the limit of the time. And I would like to once again thank the council and the mayor for holding this meeting online, so that I don't have to forego my dinner to be here. And once again, bring up the topic of the lack of need for parking at the Terry Street property. We have a petition online saying that a park would be a better use of that place, and it has, as of now, 80 signatures, which is 80 people from Wallingford saying that a parking lot is not needed. And just a couple of the comments that people made is that there's no need for additional parking in the down, in this part of downtown Wallingford. Additional green space would benefit all. And a park would make Wallingford a more beautiful place, more trees for better air quality, and parking space for bikes. So, I just, I sent this, and I hope all the council has seen it, as I sent it to them earlier today. I don't know if the mayor has or not, but I just think it's, well, I think it's a reason for us to reconsider the plan that has been put into effect for, for this area. And in conversations that I had with people today, some people say, well, that's the whole reason we bought the property. And I would note that there were people who voted for buying the property on the condition that we would consider other uses for the property when, when it was bought. Even the New Haven Register reported that Chairman Savoni said, "We're keeping an open mind after what, about what this property can be used for," on August 22nd of 2018. So, I hope that we're still keeping open mind about what this property can be used for, because I think that the, a parking lot is the least useful use of this area. And there can be a lot more, my ideas for a park, but I'm sure there's a lot better, there's a lot more ideas from the public, from people who are concerned about this. So I hope that at a future time, the council will have a public hearing, and an item on the agenda for the public to come in and bring their ideas, as this is public property, and that we should consider the public's opinion of how we use it, so that it can be used to best benefit the public. And I thank you, and I have 20 seconds left.
Duly noted. Any other members of the public wish to comment? And I see no takers, so we will continue along the agenda to item 6, Mr. Civitelli's COVID-19 update. And let's see if I can remember how to share my screen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the council.
Good evening. How's that?
Great, thank you. I know we have a lot on the council agenda tonight, so I'll jump right into it, as we normally do. In the second slide, what you'll see is, essentially, every month, we kind of go over our numbers, what we're looking at right now. The November case numbers, the October case numbers leading into October, I think we all recognize at this point, are accelerating pretty dramatically from what we saw early on in the summer, late summer. So going into the fall, I think a lot of our concerns are being seen now, in that cases are rising pretty rapidly over the last few weeks. As of this, when I finished this presentation yesterday, we did have 77 cases for the month, but that actually is 94 as of this evening, with instead of 25 in nursing home care facilities, it is at 42. So we're starting to see a situation where the disparity is starting to happen again in the nursing homes, something that we're gonna monitor closely. Again, as, as we normally discuss, we're looking at, you know, how many individuals were tested in town, and percentage of the total population tested, the number of tests conducted. The one thing I wanted to note specifically on this slide is the increase in hospitalizations. Again, yesterday, when I made, when I finished up this presentation and sent it out, it was at 496 total hospitalizations statewide. As of this evening, we're actually at 548. So, again, we're starting to see with an increase in cases, a subsequent increase in hospitalizations, which for me is really what we try and watch in terms of what the impact is, community-wide. Having cases is one thing. I guess the, the net result is, is what's the impact to the hospitals, and how, what's care fatalities, et cetera. So that's something we're gonna continue to watch as the weeks progress. As I'm sure many of you are aware, but I wanted to add it to the presentation, so the state has the town alerts. Last week, we were classified as in a red zone, meaning that we have a certain number of cases over a 14-day rolling average. What I could tell you is that we, for this coming update, we are probably gonna exceed what we did last update to a certain extent. We are continuing seeing a lot of cases from private gatherings that are driving up a lot of these cases. For example, we had one private gathering that yielded 20 cases from one private gathering. That was spread out over two weeks, but again, that goes to show you where the cases are coming from. We're seeing, again, a lot of familial spread. And, again, this is something that we're learning about in our contact tracing efforts. We've been managing that throughout the event. Again, just looking at the greater perspective from our region, we're looking at some of the adjoining towns, I just wanted to put in there, 14-day rolling averages, just to have some perspective. There, you know, we're somewhat in the middle of the pack, in between Meriden and North Bramford, but you'll see to our south, North Haven, we're all kind of in that similar range of 14-day rolling average for, over the two weeks. We did actually note this week as well, in the next slide, what you'll see is the dashboard for Choate. So Choate actually has a dashboard set up on their website, alerting everybody about the number of cases they have, so I took a screenshot and added it. Their medical advisor, Dr. Cohen, and myself have been working on their cases. And again, at this point, there's been seven cases for the entire campus, just as a reminder, they're testing all workers, staff, commuters, and boarding students there. And so they have a pretty robust testing program. Along with hospitalizations, the, the second metrics that I really pay attention to is obviously the fatalities. So as of our last update, we had 72 fatalities, I believe. As of right now, I did modify the slide slightly from when I created it, we're, have 77 fatalities, so that is five fatalities in the last two weeks roughly. Two of those were in the community, and three were in long-term care facilities. Again, it's still hard to absorb all the data that's coming through our office, but that's what we were able to attain as of this morning. Our contact tracing has been inundated over the last two to three weeks with cases. As of right now, we have 63 individuals roughly that we're monitoring for the 10-day window. And that was as of yesterday, this morning, with the added cases. It's, it's beyond that. But again, we're, we're making constant calls, whether it's dealing with the schools, businesses, other facilities in town. It's, it's been very, very steady, to say the least, over the last few weeks. I did attend the Governor's Vaccine Advisory Group. As was previously mentioned, we had a subsequent subcommittee meeting on the allocation efforts and how those will be rolled out. What I could say at this point, as I'm sure many of you are familiar with, is the Pfizer vaccine information that recently came out. What I could say on our behalf that pertains to us in town is we're trying to get ready and get certified to be able to store that vaccine and administer it to our critical workforce. So there's an actual process that the town has to go through. I'm about 75% of the way through that process now, to be able to actually be certified to receive the vaccine, and then in turn administer it. One other thing I wanted to note for a general update, what you'll see there, and in the two subsequent slides, is that Masonic Care in collaboration with Yale New Haven Hospital in early December is going to be opening a semi-permanent testing location that you'll see in the next slide. This is where it's gonna be positioned on Masonic Avenue. This is, this is good for us in that it provides us with a local test site with the accurate test, which is known as the PCR. Again, with being paired with Yale, there'll be quicker turnarounds. This is a good opportunity for our residents to have testing that is adequate and something that's convenient. We're trying to work with a pipeline with Yale for our school system, so that they have quicker turnarounds as well when there's some questions. So again, in the last slide, you'll kind of get a feeling for what the site will look like. It'll be a drive-through testing site. And again, we had a meeting with Yale New Haven Hospital, who is actually gonna be operating the facility there, but it is gonna be on Masonic site. I have been talking with JP Benoy, and he's been updating me on the process, because when this gets up and running, it's gonna be a good opportunity for our residents to, to use. So I guess with that, I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be some questions, and I'll be more than happy to answer as many as I can.
Thank you. So, forgive me if I'm asking a silly, annoying question, but is there gonna be any zoning approval required for that testing facility?
My understanding is that they were going through the building department, the fire department had attended the meeting, and I believe they were going through their, their normal review, as if it was a, a regular process. So I would assume that that would be part of the process.
Okay, well-
I will follow up on that.
Yeah, hopefully that does-
I will follow up on that.
I appreciate the, the need for that from a legal perspective, but I hope that doesn't slow down the process any more than it needs to be, because I think that's, that's gonna be a facility that's helpful to the community.
Agreed. I'll reach out to P and Z and see if, what the status is on that.
Thank you. With that, we have a question from Counselor Zandry.
Yeah, good evening. How you doing, Stephen?
I'm doing well, thank you, Counselor Zandry. How are you?
Good, good. So I have a couple of questions for you. So, first, first, I, I, I want to get an understanding of the current set of guidelines, rules, regulations, however you want to phrase them, that the Board of Education is following. And the reason for my question is, it seems to me, and I was looking- And the reason for my question is, it seems to me, and I was looking for the email that I just got because I thought it came from that email too. It seems to me that if someone is in close contact with somebody that's had COVID or, and they need to, they're basically forced to stay home 14 days, regardless of what the test shows. And I just want to confirm if that's the case and then ask why.
So yes, you are correct. The way that the state set up the smaller cohorts, the intention was if somebody in the cohort tested positive, they would quarantine that entire cohort for 14 days. I think what's happening is there's a lot of frustration with being unable to test out of a quarantine as opposed to being able to test out of a travel quarantine. And I think that CDC's guidance, there was never really any guidance to test out of quarantine for CDC. However, the state of Connecticut went their own route and started to allow for that measure to be done. But with the schools, that has not been implemented, nor would we recommend it. We don't recognize traveling as having the same exposure to a known contact within close quarters for an extended period of time. So that's kind of why that policy has been in place. I don't know if that answers the question appropriately.
Well, it gives me more background, but I guess, I guess where my concern comes from too. I could be on a plane for five hours coming across the country and I'm about as close quarters, if not more close quarters than some students in school. And I guess the concern that I've got is I can get a test. If I have to travel, I either have the option of waiting 14 days and just waiting it out, or going online to CBS.com, make an appointment, go through, and three days later I get the results. And my concern is I, I, I know there is the, the entire thing of, you know, with abundance of care and caution, and I'm not trying to dismiss any of that, but we keep going back to what is the science? And it seems like different people or different organizations or different aspects, they want to argue science when it fits their argument and then they don't want to listen to it when it goes against their argument. If the whole point is I can travel, stay at home, wait my test results, three days later be cleared, go about my regular business. Why, why do we have this another, this other set of rules or schedules for the students? And I, and I, I'll leave it open-ended at that point because I, I feel like you've explained it enough. It just sounds to me like they feel like that the results are not enough. And everybody's got different opinions on, well, when did you take the test? Were you symptomatic? Were you asymptomatic? Was it four days before or six days after? I really wish we would just simply get the science of it down. I know some of the science is ambiguous about it, but there are things that are rock solid and it seems, again, we don't want to use it. So that kind of lets me go to my next question. And I don't know whether it comes from the schools or it may come from the health department or a combination of things. Have we given any consideration at this point with the fact that this is just blowing up all over the place? The map is all red again. It almost seems logical to me as we enter the Thanksgiving holiday, people are going to travel. It doesn't matter. We can ask, we can beg, we can plead, we can say 10 people to a household or not. I can count the houses on my street that already violate this. Why don't we just simply make a decision at that week to just go to full distance learning and let it carry through to January? Because that would obviously help allow these things to cluster in households, work their way through households, not potentially expose people in the school system, parents that are driving, dropping off students that are there and so on. Have we given any consideration of just doing that for the final five weeks of the calendar year?
Yes, it's a great question and, and we talk about this almost constantly. And I, this is the stuff I think about almost every day is what, what can we do to, to slow the spread? And here's what I'll say. So right before we had the meeting tonight, the State Department of Education actually released some guidance almost encouraging us not to close through the holiday. And the thought process that they presented, that Dr. Menzo sent me, was that in the schools, we have the parameters set for social distancing, masking, et cetera, cleaning. If we go remote, full remote, the concern is, is that those things will not be followed in the community. Now, again, we could debate that discussion, but I think that that's something that we're going to have to have an honest discussion about is how we do it. Here's one thing I will say, just to kind of put it in perspective, because I know that the letters seem like there's an avalanche of letters and it's something that we're spending an awful lot of time working on, trying to do, have in-school sessions safely. So I just want, I did, I do have some numbers that I just want to provide. So we have roughly 5,300 students in Wallingford. As of right now, 1,200 roughly are in full distance learning, 125 are in quarantine, and 4,000 are in school to some extent. So from my aspect, again, I'm not an educator, but again, in talking to Dr. Menzo, if we have roughly 97% of the student population in school that's available to us and 3% in quarantine, there's a reward there to a certain extent. So I don't know when that balance gets put out of whack. But again, it's something that we're always up to have a discussion about. It's not, it's a community discussion, really. It's, it's not something that I want to have the final say on. It's something that we talk about with Dr. Menzo and we try and look at the data and what's going on, not only in Wallingford, but surrounding towns, the county, the state guidance. There's so much that gets cooked into the decision-making. But as of right now, for me, if I have 97% in person and it's, you know, we kind of know there's going to be rolling quarantines. I kind of figured that that was going to be the case, but again, I'll, I'll leave if, you know, that's kind of my thought process at this point.
All right. And that, and that makes sense. So I'll just wrap up quick with one more question that kind of popped into my head because I was looking over Pfizer's, you know, news releases with respect to the, to the work that they're doing and the, and the vaccine that they're going to be releasing. And it seems to me from what I read, and you probably know, have more information about than I do, is it, is, is there an inoculation period? In other words, if someone gets this shot, like in my head, when I get a flu shot, a regular flu shot, it's for the season. But the way that I've been kind of reading the documentation on what they're releasing, it's a 90-day window. It sounds like almost as if it, once someone's gotten the shot or the, or, you know, the flu, I'll call it the COVID shot. 90 days later, the antibodies work their way through or become less effective? Or does that mean people are going to need boosters every 90 days? Or am I reading that wrong?
I think to an extent you're correct in that the seasonality of flu, we've, early on, we talked about the R value and we talked about how many, one, if you have one person, how many persons subsequently get it, get the flu. What happens is, is because the flu has a seasonality with the vaccine that it's not really prevalent in the community, so it doesn't have time to build again, like we're seeing now. If we had a vaccine that kept the background levels lower in the community over time, you may not, you may need this once a year, is, is I think the intention. Because we know that the antibodies take time and say the antibodies from some of the documentation I have seen maybe will last six months on the high side. So again, if we have the background levels quite low, less chance of infection because you're less chance of being in contact with somebody and maybe you won't need it every three months, every four months, to your point. So I think the idea is to try and do it where it's a once-a-year shot. I do know that the Pfizer shot is, there's two shots 28 days apart to obtain the 90% efficacy. 90% efficacy is somewhere in the line of what we have for our measles shot, which is around 93%, just to kind of put that in perspective. So again, to your point, yes, it depends on which one makes it out, which vaccine makes it out. First, the concern I have with the Pfizer vaccine is obviously there's a lot of discussion about the storage of it. It has to be held ultra-cold, minus 97 degrees. There's only a handful of facilities in the state that even have the capacity to do that. So the thought process is that they're trying to evaluate how they ship it to towns in a storage container that can keep it that cold to a certain extent for a longer period of time, so we could use it adequately and safely. So I hope that answered your question, but you're on the right track.
No, it did. Thank you very much. And again, I just, I just got to say, you know, the school system's doing a fantastic job with sending out the informational updates. I, I, I know it seems like a lot of data information, but I will tell you, at least from the people that I speak to, they acknowledge it's a lot to read, but they would much rather have more than they can read than not know. And even when they get confused, at least they can kind of talk with other people. They call all of us, they call your department. At least they can kind of get the follow-up. So I appreciate that from the school side and of course, all the work that your department is doing. I can't thank you enough. So thank you very much. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm all set.
Thank you, Councilor Zandry. And we also did an informational Q and A last night with SCOW, which went fairly well too. So.
Yeah, I saw the announcement for that. I was going to try to get it. I didn't have the time, so.
All right. Thank you. Next up is Counselor Testa. Counselor Testa, should we come back to you? I think he's having some connectivity issues.
Now, here I am. Yeah, I'm having some serious connectivity problems. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I needed to, I needed to re-log on, on my iPod. I mean, my, my iPad has just myself coming in from the outside. I apologize for that confusion. I was all over the place. I wanted to ask a question on behalf of somebody else and during all of my problems, I think I might have even lost the chat. But anyway, I think it comes down to this. Mr. Civitelli, how you doing?
Good, Counselor Testa. How are you?
Good, thank you. The question primarily revolved around the question of over the last, I guess, on an ongoing seven-day rolling period. This may have been asked while I was in the, in the ozone. Are we red? Have we been red, orange, yellow? Where are we now? And on an ongoing rolling basis, where have we been?
We have been, yeah, we, we have been in the red and my assumption is we, we will continue to be.
Okay. Are you foreseeing, offering any different guidance to the school system than what's been ongoing? In other words, I get the emails every day about what's happened at which school and they're fairly routine going out to the parents and I see them on a daily basis. It seems like we've gotten quite a few just in the last couple of days about Sheehan. But are we going to continue to sort of follow the path we've been on? Or do you foresee any different guidance?
That's a great question. I think Dr. Menzo and I talk about this frequently. Do we alter the path? Do we stay the course? I think in the coming weeks, we're going to have to reevaluate where we are and see these trends. I think what may also happen is logistically, it may be very difficult, as you've seen in the high schools, to stay open when you're looking at the staffing. It seems that we've got a pretty good system in place for finding an issue and isolating the problem and continuing to push forward. I think that part of it's working. We're not seeing massive spread within the school. What we are seeing is mom or dad test positive. Child in Wallingford School subsequently gets tested, that child tests positive, and then we remove that cohort from, from the school. These are all very, very good questions that, that you're asking, and I think that it could change at a moment's notice, in all honesty. We're just trying to be as honest and forthright with the process and for right now, it appears we're going to stay the course.
Thank you. Part of the problem I was having was it was Wi-Fi related. So as Counselor Zandry was talking and you were responding, I was consistently losing the audio. So again, I apologize if this was asked. And just for the record, I look up at my computer now and I've got a big sign that says my Wi-Fi is on and everything's good. So somebody's goofing with me. If I was quarantined, so if someone is quarantined and when someone is quarantined, when and if is a test called for? And when and if is it ever reassuring? Does that make sense?
Yes, I understand your question. We kind of touched on it a little bit and a lot of, so it goes back to the discussion. No, no problem. It goes back to the discussion of testing out of a quarantine. And is there any value in that? And CDC doesn't permit for you to test at a quarantine and here's why. So if you test, say you're in a 14-day quarantine and you took a day at test five, or test at day five, excuse me, you could subsequently test positive at day 10. And so that's, that's when you're, from that aspect, that's where they're actually following the science. We know between day two and day 14, you could contract, you could basically contract the illness or start to present with symptoms. Realistically, from what we've seen, it's somewhere between day two and day eight. But again, CDC has that 14-day quarantine. It gets very confusing because people see that you could test out of a travel quarantine, but you can't test out of a quarantine for a school-related incident or sports. So that creates some confusion. And again, as I would say, again, that the travel quarantine is something that was devised by the state of Connecticut and they modified that to meet what the requirements they wanted. I don't necessarily think that follows the science. So the, the State Department of Education and the state overall, from the health department side, have continued to stay the course on the 14-day.
All right, that's, that's helpful. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'm all set. You can tell I don't even know where my camera is right now. I'm looking off in the wrong direction. All right, thank you. I'm good, obviously.
Thank you. Next up, Counselor Morgenstein.
You were there.
Yeah, I hit the wrong button. So a part of my question was answered, the school thing. And as you express the concern over control of students in the schools, it brings me to a topic that may likely be on our next council agenda. I've been hearing from many people in town about problems at Doolittle Park. And it seems, people are saying, middle schoolers are getting out of school at a certain time and congregating and really congregating in a way that is keeping families from using the park. And the police and I believe the chief, along with Superintendent Menzo have been meeting and trying to come up with suggestions. So from a health standpoint, are there any suggestions that the state is giving to towns in dealing with the fact that children, they're old enough to be quote, "home alone" and are outside in groups and I, just asking for any comment or suggestion that you might have heard with regard to this sort of problem?
No, there's, in all honesty, there's no prevailing wisdom on that in that at this point, really, I think many of us would recognize that we, these are, we're in uncharted waters. We have a semi-functional economy that's open and we're trying to do everything at the same time while controlling the pandemic. And it becomes very difficult to control social interaction when everything's open. So to your point, I think we're really focusing here on the educational side of it. Empowering people to make the appropriate choice. And when that's not happening, then we'll have to look at other options. So we'll maybe have to talk to Chief Wright and see if there's other options out there. But essentially, access to the parks, you know, we'd, we'd like to keep that open, in all honesty. We'd like to keep that going. But again, it's one of those things where we could post signage. I have talked to Kenny Michaels about some of the concerns that people have had. So we'll continue to have those conversations.
Yeah, and I would certainly say that the youth and social service angle probably pulling that in is going to be very useful. And that's why I ask, and maybe for him, is there any larger state group that he might then turn to in helping this situation? And it is, it's a completely new situation. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next up, Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hey, Steve.
Good evening, Counselor Chertel. How are you?
Good evening. I'm good. Very quick question on one of the slides you had, I think, I lost the number, 429 hospitalizations, I think was the number.
Yep, yes.
Okay, my question is, how many available hospital beds are there?
Okay, so I don't know the exact number of available hospital beds. What I could say is, is that on the slide, I had, I had to update it. So we have roughly 548 hospital beds that are being occupied right now. My understanding, at the height of the pandemic, we're roughly around 2,000. So we're inching in that direction. Over the summer, we had under 100. So we're inching in that direction. Over the summer, we had under 100.
No, but I mean, how many, I mean, like, how many hospital beds exist in this? Like, how many empty beds are there, is what I'm saying?
I don't, I don't have those. I could get those numbers, but I don't have them right now.
Yeah, that's fine. I was just, I think my, but that's what you just said, that was the second part of my question. So thank you. In terms of where we were during the height of it, I guess what I was getting at was, I do recall they had set up field hospitals, I think at Yale Bowl or other places, that even during the height were never used. I don't, were very minimally used. That's why, but I was just curious. I guess that's what I'm always sort of looking at is what, with hospital capacity, when do we, that to me is the big worry, but I'm just curious what we're, what we're at.
And that's where those, the COVID recovery units come in, like the one at QV, Quinnipiac Valley Center, is that they could discharge people that need a lower level of care sooner. So that was something that helped alleviate some of the downward pressure in the hospitals. And I, you know, I believe as of the last time I spoke with them, they're still having roughly 15 individuals at that facility. As of now, there may be slightly more, maybe slightly less. But as of last week, when I spoke with him, they had 15 individuals at that recovery unit.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing and your, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Chertel.
Thank you. It appears that that's all the questions I have from counselors. I have a question from Larry Morganstein.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question is to Stephen Civitelli. Good evening.
For the record, please.
Yep, South Main Street, Wallingford, Connecticut. My question, good evening. My question to you is that, again, everybody's very excited about Pfizer's announcement on this vaccine, but it's very early in these clinical trials. I believe there was only like 90 people that were in this group, only tested and got results back for after one week. I guess what I'm asking you is, people are hearing this and the hopes obviously are for a vaccine as soon as possible. Could you speak to that as to what's a realistic timeline for that actually happening and the risk that we have in terms of that being delivered anytime in the near future? And again, it seems very promising, but whether it plays out at 90% seems to be a hope rather than a certainty.
Yes, so my understanding of the vaccine process as of right now, the thought process is sometime early next year, it may be available in small quantities to critical workforce, hospital workers, first responders, et cetera. And then the phase two, phase three process, we're looking at mid to late next year for general public. Again, that's, that could change, as you know, at any given moment, based on the production, what's available, where the trials go. But again, that was, the 90% efficacy was, was a good sign in that we know that whatever vaccine we get to a certain extent has the capacity to be ultra-effective. To get emergency authorization from FDA, you have to have a minimum of 50% efficacy. So they well exceeded that if they continue on that path of 90%. Again, with measles being at 93%, the measles vaccine, it kind of gives you a frame of reference as to how well it may work for the general population, if indeed it holds. But to your point, yes, we are, a week in COVID land is a very long time. I could tell you a week in the office at the Health Department feels like a month right now. So again, yes, it's, we're a little ways off, but the hope is it'll come mid to late next year.
Thank you. And again, my thing is not to tamp down, but to make sure that the message that you're giving is so important that the public understands that there's still a long way to go with this. And as promising as it is, we need to have everybody following all the things with masks, with social distancing and washing hands. That none of that changes with this vaccine possibly coming, and it's still a ways away. So that's kind of what I just wanted to clarify and have your message be. And I would think that would be the message you'd want to put out.
Yeah, I think at the last council meeting or the one previously, we had mentioned that non-pharmaceutical interventions, masking, distancing, handwashing are what we have for the time being. And again, with some of the other things that therapeutics are just as important, whereas if you contract the virus, something that could help you recover quick, more quickly. So again, that's, that's the other side of the coin as well. So that's something we're watching as well.
Thank you so much for all you do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morganstein.
All right, with that, I think we have no more questions on this topic. Mr. Civitelli, thank you for all of your hard work, and I'm sure you look forward to the day when you can get some rest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Onto item seven, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the United Public Service Employees Union Contract Information Technology Employees Local 424 Unit 19B, one-year extension from July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and second. Yes, we have staff from the Board of Education. Ms. Belizzi, if you can please enlighten us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me this evening. Yes, in front of you, you have the Information and Technology Contract Extension Agreement. And I just want to say before I start that this group has really been vital to our system right now in providing our staff and our students and our families the technology in terms of Chromebooks and laptops and iPads to make sure that our staff and our families have access to our virtual platforms to ultimately make sure we can educate our students during this time right now. So they have really worked tirelessly to support us and have given a tremendous amount of support throughout this entire process. So I really just wanted to make sure we acknowledge them throughout this. So in front of you tonight, you have the contract extension. This was originally a two-year contract. We started negotiating with them. And ultimately, we came to some agreements that you see here for the extension. So this extension would take us through to June 30th of 2020. The unit has agreed to a zero increase in wages right now till the end of this extension and to maintain the same amount of premium cost share that they pay in the insurance. So that's at 14%. In addition, we agreed to not lay off or furlough any of their positions right now to the end of this contract extension. We felt that since they are so vital to providing what we need to be successful to educate our students, that at this time, each and every one of those positions is really essential for us right now. It is not precedent binding. It is something that if moving forward in, you know, future negotiations, we will not agree to that moving forward right now. But for right now, we felt like that was really important to honor what they're doing for us as well. Again, it doesn't, you know, preclude any of us from taking any disciplinary action or anything like that if we feel like we need to. But, you know, that just piece of just securing what we have right now was important in, in agreeing with this group right now.
Thank you very much. First question comes from Counselor Fishmine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Ms. Belizzi.
Good evening.
The document that's before us appears to reaffirm certain portions of the existing contract for the next year. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And I'm looking at section 2.2 of the existing contract. And that says, "All employees within the bargaining unit shall become and remain members of the union or pay a service fee allowable by law to the union as a condition of continuing employment not later than 30 calendar days after their date of hire. An agency fee payer may apply to the union for a rebate in accordance with the union's existing procedure." Now, we've discussed this before. You understand that that language is unconstitutional.
Agreed.
And is there a reason why, since we affirmed certain portions of the contract, that we didn't address this violation of our workers' constitutional rights?
Right. And so we can go back, and so we have a couple of options. I completely understand where you're coming from. If I look at section 18.2, though, on page 16, it does have that savings clause in there that says that if any piece of this contract is invalid, which we know that section 2.2 is, that the remainder of this contract agreement is still enforceable. So we can, you know, look at that piece and know that the section 2.2 is not accurate and it's illegal, and we understand that, and we can fix it, and we definitely will fix it. We can go back and now and speak to the union and see if that is something that we want to add and change to the MOU or to the contract agreement extension and fix it now. But we will definitely clean up that language in June when we need, in the spring.
Yeah, I would prefer that it gets, it's done now. But do you have a legal opinion from any lawyer in the United States that says the savings clause addresses this issue? Because in 1951, the Second Circuit, the federal court, which covers Connecticut, said that you can't do that.
So we consult with Shipman and Goodwin, our counsel from there, and that is the advice that we are given at this time. I can certainly bring that back and address that with our attorney as well.
Well, my question was, do you have something in writing from a lawyer that says that that savings clause cures the constitutional violation?
I don't have something in writing. I'm just reading the piece from the contract here at 18.2.
Yeah, no, I understand, but you're not a lawyer, right?
No, I'm not a lawyer, no.
Okay, and so I'm just, you're deferring to the lawyers that you consult with. And I'm just asking, has a lawyer that you've consulted with actually put something in writing?
In writing, right, right now for this contract or in general? I have consulted.
This has been an issue for quite a long time. And I've heard from, I believe, your predecessor that, you know, the same thing. We consult with our lawyers and savings clause, but nobody has ever shown me anything in writing. No lawyer representing the Board of Education has ever appeared before us who has ever said that this applies. And I know our federal court has said just the contrary. So my question is, do you have something in writing that addresses this issue?
I do not have anything in writing at this point right now.
Okay, can you get that for us, or at least for me? Because I keep on hearing this claim that the savings clause addresses this. Nobody's willing to actually put it in writing. That's what lawyers do. You know, we're asked for opinions. And I would expect, based upon the representations, that an opinion was asked for, an answer was given, and that somebody's willing to stand behind that opinion and sign on the dotted line. And I'd be looking for that. So, but I thank you for the exchange.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up is Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, Ms. Belizzi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you. How about yourself?
Good, thanks. I have the same, really the same issue that Counselor Fishmine has, but I'm not a lawyer either. But I just, I don't have an issue with this because I understand it's an extension and I, I'm fine with it. I just, I just wanted to bring up that I, too, you had said that in June, when you look at this again, that you're going to look at taking that out. So I would, I just wanted to say that, you know, for now, I'm fine with it. But I do think that it should, it should probably be looked at and be removed, hopefully, for the next contract, so. But thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question, I guess for you, point of order in general with these things. We have a motion on the table to approve this contract. If that motion were to fail, the contract still goes into force in 60 days or 90 days or something. Is that correct?
Yes, it would take a it would take a majority vote on a motion to refuse or reject the contract, rather, that would take care of that.
Okay, that's, yep, I just want to confirm that. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I see no other questions from the council. Are there questions from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Fishmine? Raffin?
Yeah.
Moreau?
Yes.
Morganstein?
No.
Chertel?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Sandri?
Yes.
And Chairman Savoni?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Belizzi.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thanks, you too. All right, next up is a public hearing to consider an act on an amendment to Chapter 46, Reserve Accounts, Article 2 of the Code of the Town of Wallingford. The new additional language would be that on or before November 30th and April 1st of each fiscal year, the comptroller shall provide the town council with a report of all capital and non-recurring funded projects completed and/or closed out during the previous fiscal year ending June 30th, including the dollar amount unspent for each closed-out project. I hereby open the public hearing and would like to see if there is any public comment. I'll give it another minute. There being none, I will close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Mr. Vice Chairman, can I have a motion, please?
Sure. Sorry, I was expecting Counselor Chertel to make the motion. I move that we accept the amendment to Chapter 46, Reserve Accounts, Article 2 of the Code of the Town of Wallingford, as proposed.
I'll second that.
Counselor Chertel is chairman of the Ordinance Committee. Would you like to add anything to this discussion?
Oh, I'll always add to the discussion. I think that this is, if you, if you're a follower of the town council and you've been watching our meetings, you'll know that this came up really in April when we were doing the budget. Counselor Fishmine and I had both separately, I think, asked Mr. Bose for some info on the cap and non-account. Basically, the cap and non-recurring account is an account that is set up to receive the payment in lieu of taxes from the Electric Division. It is subject to state statutes. The money can only be spent on big, certain improvement projects. It's a very broad description, but basically, that's what it is. And basically, this, what this does is, in working with the comptroller since the budget, a number of us felt that we needed a little bit more insight into projects that are closed out, how much money is left over. We do get 100-page monthly report from the, from the Financial Department, Finance Department. So we do get information, but there's a lot of info in there. It's not always easy for a layperson, even for a counselor, to have to decipher. So what this really does is, this helps us. And Comptroller Bose was very good to work with us on this, and he conducts this sweep anyway of the account. So it just made sense that we would put this in place and it would provide a little bit more insight into the status of the account and really help the council, specifically going into budget season every April. So that's, that's kind of the background on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Fishmine has a question. Counselor Fishbein has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, should I direct my question at Counselor Chertel as being the drafter and the chair of the ordinance committee? Is that appropriate?
Well, I'm willing to let, let us see where this goes. So give it a shot.
So there's two categories that are addressed in this language. It's projects that are completed and projects that are closed out. So we know what a completed project is, but what's a, what's a closed-out project? How does a project become closed out?
When it's completed.
No, I don't think, well, it says and/or. It's got to be a difference. There's got to be a difference between a completed project and a closed-out project. Otherwise, it would say completed or closed out, or it would say, or it wouldn't have both. There's got to be statutory drafting, you know, there's a, there's a meaning for each word. So there's got to be a difference. I think a closed-out project, if I may, is under the charter.
Oh, you may, you may.
Under the charter, it says that if no expenditure is made within three years, the project shall be closed out or suspended or whatever. Is that the intent of closed out here? You're familiar with that language. I know that.
I am familiar, yeah, I am familiar with that language. The intent, first of all, I didn't draft the language. Attorney Small drafted the language, so you're giving me way too much credit. Secondly, this is, God, this is why I hate lawyers, except for Vinnie and Attorney Small. You can get that in the minutes, Barbara. You can definitely quote me on that in the minutes. So no, I, I looked at this and to me, what it means is that in twenty eighteen, the mayor and the budget put, we're going to spend, I'm just making this all up, two hundred thousand dollars to improve Pregman Park. And that's in cap and non. And after we got a grant and, you know, we got through some hurricanes, in twenty twenty, we spent a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars of that original two hundred thousand dollar allocation. Therefore, the project is now completed and closed out. And there's two thousand dollars that's left. That two thousand dollars now sits in cap and non-unassigned until it is otherwise designated by the mayor during budget time, or I guess at any other time he could designate it. So that's what we were trying to get at. That was the intent, was to really get at some of those dollar amounts of those projects. That's how I interpret the language. I did not, I think there was, I didn't think of a distinction between closed or completed. Now, to your other point, you raised the issue of the charter and the fact that, you know, we have a three-year window to, to spend the money or it goes unassigned. And I think, so my intent with this was, I think that this ordinance bakes into the process, this report out, which wasn't there before, which I think then leads to the comptroller giving us that, giving everything, us giving any future council that information as well. Meaning projects that were completed or closed out twelve years ago and there's a dollar left over. We got that amount this year when we asked for it. So I feel like I didn't, I did, I did have a back and forth with Attorney Small and about that element of the language. And after some deliberation, I didn't want to get that prescriptive with the language because I felt like the conversation the council would have, based on the language that's in there now, would inherently lead to a future council getting that overall aggregate number. You may disagree with that and that's fine. I also worry about the fact that we are, you know, we don't have an audit out yet. So anything we talk about, so the, the language talks about a November first report out, which I think is good. But I think it's also understanding that, you know, any numbers we get are not audited. They're not, so, you know, you, that's where the April one report accounts for any changes. I don't know what changes they would be. So that was another concern, though, with getting that prescriptive with the language. And then finally, my final point, I'm sorry for talking for so long. If there are a majority of counselors who agree that, no, we should make it specific and really talk about all that stuff, not just completed or closed out, but I mean, really get into all the historic projects. I would say, let's address that separately. Let's pass this and then let's go back to that if we want to add on to it. Because I think this is really good and I don't, I don't want to see this necessarily die based on that. So anyway.
So, so I think there's three different kinds of projects that this language should deal with. It's a project that's completed and there's money left or there's no money left, right? Because the language is drafted, doesn't say there has to be money left for the reporting. There is a project that's in the middle of being done. You know, I think that would be relevant to know, you know, because it may have some objections. And then there's the project that was budgeted, but very little was ever appropriated. You know, sometimes we do, you know, we, you know, we budget, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars. We do some plans. Maybe we do them internally, you know, we expend five grand. But the project, you don't expend any money. That wouldn't come as part of this language being reported.
It's already.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be reported because the project is not completed and it's not closed out. It's in its interim.
Well, well, right, but I think I'm going to, your second point, too, the middle project. We do get in the monthly report, an entire breakdown of all these projects and the year that they were initiated, the funding that's, the funding that was originated, that was allocated, the encumbered funding and then the, what's left. We do get that already.
No, I know, but I, I thought, and I think this language is a step in the right direction. But you know, you know, you're good with going to all these different reports. My thought was, you know, this is the health of the cap and non-recurring account. It isn't that I got to go to this other monthly report and put that into there. You know, this is twice a year. This is what's been appropriated. This is what's left. This is what is yet to happen. That was what I thought we were going to end up with. I don't want to trust a future council to, to do what we've recognized should be addressed. So I'm a little concerned with just having it be completed and/or closed out during the previous fiscal year. But I, I look forward to hearing from you why that is sufficient. If a project was budgeted three years ago, very little money was spent on that, why that shouldn't be part of this twice-a-year reporting. So we have one place to go.
No, it would be, it would be part of it. I don't, I never said it wouldn't be part of it.
It's not completed and it's not closed out.
We already, we already get that, though. We already get those.
That's my point. That's my point. I don't want to have to go, or a future council, to have to go to some other document to say, well, this stuff is on that other thing. This, this reporting is supposed to be about the condition of the cap and non-recurring account. In a project that was budgeted three years ago, very little money was spent on it. You've got hundreds of thousands of dollars sitting there. For some reason, it isn't expended in my scenario. I think the council should know about that.
Right. Every month, every month, you get an email from Barbara and it says, monthly financial report. And somewhere around page eighty-four, it clearly lists, it's not the greatest thing to look at. It never aligns with my iPad and I'm trying to read it because the thing always doesn't, it always flips, whoever scans it, it flips the opposite way. But anyway, everything, so everything that you see, so let's just, let's just take, for example, you just used an example of a project, a project that was begun in twenty eighteen and nothing's been done on it. Right, so in today's world, there's no, we get the report and we can go look on page sixty-seven or whatever and see, oh, wait, there was twenty eighteen. They spent, this much money was allocated and nothing's been spent. But there is no, we would not get an update on that for months. Whereas this new language ensures that twice a year, there would be an update on that. There would be a, you don't think it does.
No, because it says completed or closed out. So that project is not completed and that project is not closed out.
Right, right, you're right. On that one, you're right.
And that's my point.
So what would you suggest for, in that scenario?
There'd be any project. Just don't limit it. With a report of all capital and non-recurring fund projects.
Well, we do, again, though, we do get a report of all cap and non-projects. We're just not getting, we're not getting any commentary on it. That's the thing, unless we ask.
I don't know, those are, I mean, I'll, I can play with it. I can look at it. I just wanted to have the discussion. But you understand, I mean, I think you understand.
Yeah, no, I do, I do understand. No, I, I understand.
If we remove the clause that says completed and/or closed out during the previous fiscal year, maybe that would work because then I would say with a report of all capital and non-recurring fund projects, including the dollar amount unspent for each closed-out project. Maybe that works because that would cast a wide net. Anything that's, has been budgeted or is in the budget would be a capital and non-recurring fund project. And we're looking for the dollar amount unspent for a closed-out project. So, I mean, are you comfortable with that?
Yes and no. I am somewhat comfortable with it, but I just feel like in one sense, we already get a lot of that info already, but I hear what you're saying. I don't know, Mr. Bose, if, well, Mr. Chairman's meeting, I see Mr. Bose, I know he's on the line. He may want to comment, too, but.
And maybe he would, but I just offer that it wouldn't be a heavy lift considering that some of that information is already in that monthly report, so it's a bring-over.
Right.
But I look forward to, so those are my comments. Maybe it'll come back to me. You know, I'll probably make a motion at some point, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, so this was noticed as a public hearing and the ordinance published and this was fleshed out at a meeting of the committee and you know, there was, it was a public meeting with public participation. It was a virtual meeting like we're having now. So a lot of this stuff was, we had the opportunity to discuss it in committee. It's not impossible to do what we're doing tonight, but we did have a committee meeting on this, so. Counselor Chertel, Counselor Laffin, did you want to do anything differently?
Yeah, you know what, I'm gonna, I withdraw the motion because clearly this, there needs to actually be further discussion that did not take place in a previous meeting. So if somebody else wants to remake the motion, that's fine, but I'm, I'm out.
Yeah, I'll throw my second.
The motion is withdrawn, the second is withdrawn and we will revisit this in committee. Moving on to item nine, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a bid waiver request for Shipman's Fire Equipment Company Incorporated to purchase fifty self-contained breathing apparatus and supporting equipment in the amount of up to four hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second. Once again, Chief Hyde Guard.
Mr. Chairman, and this is Deputy Chief Joe Settenour speaking. Good evening, good evening, counselors.
Good evening.
We come before you tonight to request a bid waiver and consider and request a bid waiver for approval to purchase SCBA self-contained breathing apparatus and ancillary equipment with, that's already been fully funded in this capital this fiscal year. Shipman's Fire Equipment, they're designated as a single-source supplier. They're also the authorized distributor and service center for three M Scott Fire and Safety Products, which includes all the self-contained breathing apparatus and equipment and service and maintenance that we use. They act as a single source of distribution sales. They have the trained service personnel to maintain and repair this equipment. We've been purchasing from them for quite a few years. We've had to go out to bid the last six years for different parts and pieces and they've come back as being awarded to the sole bidder, sole responsible bidder. So we ask that you consider and approve this request for the bid waiver.
So is, is there a reason why we can't just bid this, why we can't just see what else is out there for these SCBAs?
The Scott SCBAs that we use currently, we've been using for many years. This is a critical piece of equipment that we use, as you can imagine, for firefighting. And there's a lot of training and the maintenance. We have air compressors, very specific to this brand. There are other brands out there, but to change and go to another type of a brand, we've vetted this out. The three M Scott product is the superior product and we would want nothing but the best equipment, breathing equipment for our firefighters.
And do we benefit from group buying through the state or through some other organization for this product?
Typically, we get the lowest bidder. They give us the state bid prices when we go out to bid on this and we also vet that up against the co-ops that also do the bidding.
Very good. Thank you. First question from Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi, good evening. My question is, it looks like you're requesting about a hundred thousand more than the quote total. Can you just explain that difference?
Basically, we went out, we did an estimate based on what we thought it may, may cost, and that was about a year ago. Some of the technologies changed, the prices have dropped. And we've also gone through a restructuring, so we believe we need less SCBA apparatus. Currently, we have about sixty-nine units in service. With the restructuring, we believe we can get down to around fifty or fifty-two. So that's where cost savings been garnered.
So would we be able to, to drop that number to, to around the three eighty-five?
To the three eighty-six and change. I do believe that we probably could. Depending on when we get out to bid, there were some ancillary products that we also had to get with masks, rapid intervention packs that go along with these. But I believe we should be right around that ballpark figure if we act.
Okay, so if we, if we leave it at the, the number that you requested, the four ninety-seven, and then you end up only needing, you know, around, I don't know, let's say, you know, three ninety, maybe with some extra items, then you, you just wouldn't spend the, I mean, the savings would just, would just stay. It's, we're not, correct? I mean, you spend less than what you're requesting for the bid waiver. It would just be unspent, correct?
That, that's correct, Counselor. And that money's been funded through CRRA, so we'd only spend what we need and the rest remains.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you. That was all I had.
So the, the purpose of the motion is to allow them to avoid the bid process. The number, the dollar amount, isn't really significant. They've already budgeted for it. We're just allowing them not to look for the highest qualified bidder and instead go directly for this particular merchant. And that's all I have from the council. Oh, Counselor Chertel.
Sorry, I got, I got that in under the wire. Very quick question. Just this three M, the Scott, the brand that you talked about, this is the only authorized dealer to get that brand. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our only authorized dealer for Connecticut and Rhode Island. And we utilize them for doing a lot of maintenance and repairs on our, on our equipment.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief.
All right. Once again, that appears to be all I have from the council. I do have a question for Mr. Martin. Just a reminder, public name and address for the record, please.
Ben Martin, three twenty-nine Ward Street. Chief, I'm just, or Deputy Chief, sorry. I assume that there's regulations around this type of equipment that. that everybody who makes it and provides it has to live up to. Is that correct?
That is correct. NFPA creates regulations as well as NIOSH.
So wouldn't that mean that any provider of this would have to provide the same quality of equipment?
They'd have to provide equipment that meets those standards. Quality is subject to the user.
And you said previously that you've bid this before, and it's always come out to this company, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so I guess I would ask the council, what are we saving by not bidding it?
The issue is not savings. The bid waiver is to get, to allow them to get the specific product they need to match the equipment they already have. That's, that's the issue. If you go out to bid, you don't get to name the brand. You have to write specifications that narrow things down to match your product, but if, in this particular instance, they're going to write specifications so specific that nobody else can bid other than somebody who distributes a 3M product, then the bid waiver is what makes sense.
I mean, it, it seems to me, and this is only my opinion, I guess, it seems to be unnecessary to do a bid waiver for something that we're getting through the bid process anyway. It seems like a solution in search of a problem. And seeing that other equipment has to live up to the same standards, regulatory standards, then the maker of the product shouldn't matter. But that's just my opinion. Thank you.
The regulatory standards wouldn't necessarily mean that all the moving parts would fit together. There are several parts to this system, you know, and Chief, Chief Seton, please feel free to step in.
Yeah, yeah, yes. There are compatibility issues with what we have with other equipment that's within the department. This is not standalone equipment. This is compatible with other equipment that we have, whether it's our air compressors that fill it, the bottles that we have, the rapid intervention packs that we have for saving down firefighters that are trapped in buildings. So it's not a standalone. It also has to be compatible.
Mr. Chairman, Chief Higgin, if I could further expound on that. A piano keyboard is consistent among all manufacturers. The keys are all in the same place. When it comes to this type of safety system, you're operating in an environment where you don't have any sense of sight. Often, you're also wearing gloves to manipulate the valves and function within an air pack. It needs to be specific to one brand, and we've stayed with Scott for the 40 or 38 years I've been in the system, because you want muscle memory. You don't want to retrain somebody to go looking for a bypass switch or other life-saving parts of that apparatus and relearn a new tool. And this brand keeps all those parts in the same places. So we have consistent training amongst our career and volunteer staff. So staying with that one vendor is critical in many different areas.
Okay, and I certainly support that. I guess, so if I'm understanding correctly, what we're saving here is writing out the bid in a way that says it has to match all of the specifications that we currently use.
Well, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're also saving from having to replace the entire system for the entire department.
Correct. Yeah, sorry, Chief Higgin, again, if, in fact, we had a different vendor come in that does meet the NIOSH standard and FBA, it would completely, the retraining of our entire workforce and getting them to the point where they're competent on that new equipment and comfortable using it, that would be a daunting task. I would see that as a critical safety problem more than just an exercise in purchasing.
Okay, and that makes sense. But I guess my question again is, if we've bid this before and gotten this company before, how was this problem avoided in the past?
Well, this has been bidded out in the past. We bought several units, and they're always the sole source bidder, and they're from 3M. Scott, they've been designated as a sole source supplier. So really, there's not another company that we can get, you can go maybe out of state to another state, but that wouldn't be effective for maintenance and repairs.
So this goes back to my original point. I don't want to deprive our firemen of equipment they need, and I don't want the fire company to have to switch out any equipment. And I need, want them to get what they need, but if this is the way it's been done in the past, and we've gotten what we needed, why are we changing it?
You know, I think we've all answered those questions.
Okay, thanks.
All right, that's all the comment I see in the chat bar. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Fishby?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yeah.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Sandri?
Yes.
Chairman Savani?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion on item 11? There is nothing for item 10.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 1-606B with respect to the pending workers' compensation claim, Rapples versus Towne of Longford.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council in executive session. I'm going to ask everybody who's not participating in the executive session to leave the meeting. And if you're not leaving voluntarily, I will bounce you off, block the meeting. You'll be able to log back in.
This conference will now be recorded.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of coming out of executive session signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare the council back in public session. And is there a motion on item 12?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the settlement as discussed in executive session in the matter of the workers' compensation claim of Rapples versus Towne of Longford.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishby?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yeah.
Marone?
Yes.
Morganstein?
Yes.
Chertel?
Yes.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Sandri?
Yes.
And Chairman Savani?
Yes.
The motion passes.
With that, there being no further business on the agenda, I will end this meeting or adjourn it and close the virtual session. Everybody have a lovely evening.
Good night.